Hey Kirby, do you hear the cricket? Oh, he's muted now. Actually, you're muted Kirby, because we could hear the cricket and we were trying to decide where it was coming from. We can't hear, now we can't hear you though. Can you unmute him Patricia?
What's that cricket in game?
Okay.
Oh yeah, so do you hear the?
Yes, I heard the cricket, yes.
I don't hear it now.
No, he stopped.
Okay.
I guess he knows the meeting is starting.
Okay, perfect. Thanks Kirby. We're just about to get started.
Okay.
Call a meeting to order. Today's meeting is being streamed live via Township of Addington Highlands YouTube channel. To those present in the gallery today by attending a public meeting of council, you are consenting to your image, voice, and comments being recorded. Anyone invited to speak will be recorded and their voice, image, and comments will form part of the live stream. The Chair and our Clerk have the discretion and authority at any time to direct the termination or interruption of the live streaming. Such traction will only be given in exceptional circumstances where deemed relevant. Circumstances may include instances where the content of debate is considered misleading, defamatory, or potentially inappropriate to be published. Notices hereby provided that under the authority of the Municipal Act 2001 and in accordance with Ontario's Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, that all information provided for or at a public meeting slash consultation or other public process are considered part of the public record. Members of council staff, delegations, and attendees should be mindful of using names of individuals or entities when discussing matters in public. Attendees are advised that they may be subject to legal action if their actions resulted in inappropriate and/or unacceptable behavior and/or comments. As part of the township's procedural bylaw as amended, all votes during electronic meetings will be recorded votes. All of council is present in the council chambers with the exception of Councillor Thompson who is participating electronically. Thank you. Now I'll ask for a motion to amend the, to approve the agenda with an amendment to include the OPP. Deputy Reeve Frich and Councillor Yance, ready for the vote. Councillor Hook.
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Frich.
Yes.
Councillor Yance.
Yes.
My motion is carried. Oh, sorry, yeah, Councillor Thompson.
Yes.
Sorry about that, a misty went here.
That's okay.
Adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting dated August the 5th, 2025. Councillor Hook, Councillor Thompson, any errors or omissions? Ready for the vote, Councillor Thompson.
Yes.
Councillor Hook.
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Frich.
Yes.
Councillor Yance.
Yes.
My motion is carried. Disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof.
None noted.
We have a rise in report. A closed meeting was held on 1:00 PM August 19th, 2025 pursuant to the section 239 sub 2 of the Municipal Act as amended, at which recommendations were made to adopt closed meeting minutes of July 8th, 2025 to receive an update regarding the part-time temporary office assistant position, to review applications received for Ward 1 operator position, and to select candidates to interview, to receive and approve extended health benefits to an employee who has reached the maximum age for coverage, and to receive a privileged report from Gier Galloway. That'd be resolved that the recommendations from the closed meeting be adopted in that motion. Councillor Hook, Councillor Yance, any questions? Ready for the vote, Councillor Thompson.
Yes.
Councillor Hook.
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Frich.
Yes.
Councillor Yance.
Yes.
My motion is carried. Valuations and petitions, OPP.
Good afternoon, thank you Reeve Vogg. Good afternoon everyone, it's great to be back here in Flinton. As you know, we come up here regularly for our quarterly community safety table meetings and so that those are always enjoyable times and it's great to be up here this afternoon. Thank you for adding us onto your agenda. Our purpose for being here is to answer any questions and kind of informally deliver the 2024 Lennings and Addington Detachment Board Report. This report has gone through our detachment board and is disseminated to our various councils. So this is just an opportunity to come up, provide some high-level briefing notes on the report and really is more of an opportunity for council here to ask any questions of us. I have with me today Staff Sergeant Al O'Byrne. Al runs the operations, field operations of our crime unit, our community street crime unit, our field, so the platoons and all the officers on the road and our traffic management area. So Al is a big piece of the results of this report, he's here with us today. And I'll also frequent here with the community safety table meetings. So with that, I'll go through the report, we really break it down into three areas and then at the end, any questions you may have about the report or just in any questions at all about policing in general. I'm always happy to talk about what we're doing and specifically some of the successes and some of the great things we're doing up here in the Addington Highlands area. The 2024 annual report highlights our crime initiatives, our roadway, waterway, and trail safety initiatives as well as our community wellbeing pieces and also highlights the successes that we've had over the last year. 2024 also represents a midway point for our 2023 to 2025 OPP action plan. So our action plan is broken into a couple of years, so this is like a midway report and we're excited to work with our detachment board in the coming year as we put together our next action plan. And that's what's unique from the current one that we're working under right now is we had no detachment board. So now that we have that board, we work with that board who are representative of all our communities and we determine what the community priorities are and we build those into our action plan and it's really what forms how we do business. During the 2025 action plan period, Lennings and Addington OPP have increased our capacity for investigative excellence in a few ways. One is we've investigated or invested in the training of our people. We've enhanced oversight of our victim-based calls and increased public awareness of technology-based crimes. Specific initiatives over the past couple of years have included providing new temporary assignment opportunities to our membership, our officers, providing experiential learning for the management of more complex investigations. Our services as well as many services across Ontario are really seeing an influx of younger new officers and one of the struggles that we have, not just our detachment but provincially, is getting our people trained. So a lot of the training for our new officers is being found within-house and so we've had to kind of shift our focus within our daily operations to provide the training and a lot of that comes through experiential opportunities, for example, assignments in the crime unit working with our more experienced officers. We've, we have increased the number of formal training courses we've been sending our officers on. Things like human trafficking investigations have become important, inter-partner violence investigations, and investigative interviewing techniques. Those are three priorities we have for our frontline officers. We've also trained our officers in the new community safety outreach system, so that's the CCTV system which Greater Napanee has put in and invested some money through our partnership with them and some grant, grant money. So there's now a broad network of CCTV cameras and we are a user, it's being managed by the Greater Napanee area but we've had a lot of success in solving crime, finding missing persons through that technology. We've also supported the new OPP Crime Prevention and Community Support Bureau that the OPP put in place in the last year. It's a response to a cumulative accumulation of several concurrent organizational initiatives. Our detachment supports this bureau and its work through a new position dedicated at providing support in abuse investigations. So this position is called a Detachment Abuse Issues Investigator and this officer provides oversight and the highest level support to our victims of crime. We've put more resources towards engaging the vulnerable community groups to educate individuals and organizations about several types of fraud, how they work, and how to prevent them. I know over the last couple of years, we're actually up in this area and presented to a pretty, a full hall and it was an initiative that was sparked from the community safety table and recognizing and need to have that outreach to the vulnerable people in this community. So again, another great success, we're doing a number of those things, we do those often through the work of our auxiliary program and our community engagement officer. Also in the crime area over the last couple of years, our frontline mobile technology has enhanced considerably. All of our cars are now equipped with in-car cameras, all of our officers are wearing body worn cameras now. All the cruisers have mobile workstations which gives our officers every opportunity to do anything that they would normally do in a detachment. They've all been issued personal cell phones which are linked to this technology so they can watch their video from in-car camera, body worn camera, all that through their use of their phone and upload it to our, to appropriate databases. All of our cruisers have automated license plate recognition which is capable of scanning and providing information for a number of license plates per second. So great technology that's assisted us in identifying suspended drivers, vehicles not insured. It can also be used for locating wanted persons and any other serious type offenders who might be out that we put on this, on this, upload into this technology. And OPP over the last year has transitioned to a modern encrypted and innovative radio system. It's an interministerial system that be utilized by eight Ontario ministries and used by more than 38,000 frontline emergency workers and it will allow for interoperability. All the radios have GPS technology and what that does for us in policing is provides an enhanced level of officer safety that if ever one of these radios was activated, we need to find an officer, we could find them through that GPS technology. Our roadways, waterways, and trails, we have focused on engagement and education on our highways, trails, waterways, emphasize the need for every operator, passenger, and recreational user to be responsible for eliminating risks to prevent serious injury or even loss of life. We've engaged with communities, stakeholders, and our regional traffic teams to address specific issues. During this action period plan, the LNA OPP is committed to a full-time marine program between May to September. And so we'll be shutting this one down in the next couple of weeks. During 2024, our marine operators engage more than 1,300 operators on the waterways, promoting recreational safety with a focus on preventing unnecessary injury or death. Just in speaking with our marine operator this morning, I asked him if he can give me a rough percentage of how often he's on the waterways in this area. He said that it's well over half the time that we spend on our, on our waterways or up in this area in particular, Bon Echo. Just shared that yesterday up on the lake here, there were people wearing life jackets on backwards and people on paddle boards with no life jackets at all. So still have a lot of work ahead of us, but those are the things that cause the unnecessary injuries and deaths, totally preventable. And you know, we see it, it's new recreational users coming to our areas with no education and you know, you can't make this up to put a life jacket on backwards. So they were literally unzipping the life jacket from the rear of this person and having them put it on towards the front. So this is what we see, this is why it's so important to be on our waterways as often as we can. Our officers remain steadfast in their commitment to keeping our roads safe. Over the past year, impaired driving enforcement increased by 20% over what the numbers were in 2023. Our speed enforcement increased by 32% over 2023. Our seatbelt enforcement doubled over the 23-year and distracted driving enforcement near tripled from our efforts in 2023. Our fatal motor vehicle collisions were reduced and I'm pleased to report that year-to-date fatalities, personal injury collisions, and property damage collisions have been reduced by a further 14%. LNA OPP formed a traffic alliance in 2024 with neighboring detachments to increase visibility and capacity to effectively respond to road safety concerns. And this is initiative, sorry, an enhancement to our everyday proactive duties that our officers are expected to do and increases our visibility and our community outreach opportunities. And we also continue to work closely with our provincial support partners, East Region Save. So that's our Stoneville ATV vessel enforcement unit. Again, in addition to our full-time marine program, they're also on the waterways and trails in this area and also our regional traffic team who are, the team is housed in both Quinny West and Odessa detachments but provide traffic services to all the, all areas north of LNA, south and along our highways. So again, not only do we have our LNA officers, but we do have our regional assets who are also in the communities each day. Our community wellbeing through the 2022 to 2025 action plan period, LNA OPP have focused on sustained community engagement model, recognizing community engagement and collaboration as a cornerstone for success towards approaches and best practices. And as I said, our community safety table here is just one example of the initiatives and that was conceptualized probably two years ago from a council meeting, an open forum meeting where the public brought to our attention that they wanted greater, more opportunities to engage OPP and understand what we're doing and to hear their concerns. So we'd committed at that time to a quarterly community safety table and it's, it's been quite successful. We've, we've had some initiatives come out of it and I think one of the, one of the things I'm most pleased with is that in one, in our most recent meetings, we asked that a member of the youth be involved with this community safety table because the youth are our future and the youth are a big part of our community. So we do have, we put it back to the local high school to identify a young, mature representative for the school who could come and be that voice in our community and be part of this community table because again, they are our community. So a great success and it's something I talk to when I'm going all throughout the LNA areas is just about how open this community was to that and, and how it's got a lot of promise, especially when we're bringing on the young people into that, into that fold. Through 2024, we continue to expand our capacity to meet the needs of the most vulnerable in our community through an integrated mobile crisis response team. Through provincial grant funding, this partnership has increased from two to three MCERTs, so a mobile crisis response team, that's the acronym MCERT, members who support officers by attending calls involving individuals experiencing mental health crises. In 2024, MCERT received more than 4,000 service contacts, completed more than 1,200 follow-up interactions supporting individuals, and exchanged more than 2,500 phone calls or texts with members of our community who needed support. So these three MCERT workers work within the Lennings and Addington detachment. Actually, they're strategically located right near the door to, to the back so our officers can quickly pick them up or if they're on their way out to the detachment to a call, they just accompany the officer and get in the car. They're responding to over one call a day with our officers in providing support to those vulnerable persons. So what it's shifted from is, you know, a day when the police were the number to call, when people are in crisis and we would respond, but in fact, these really are not police calls. These are social service calls and we failed people in the past by not having the appropriate resources available to them. But by having MCERT workers accompany us, they are our conduit to so many other services in our community and we can connect people immediately when they need it most, them. And it takes pressure off of our officers who aren't trained to, in most cases, to deal with these situations. But once we get these people to the social services that they require, then our officers can, you know, continue their normal routine and be out there in our community doing what police are intended to do and social services within our community are doing what they're intended to do and it's really a win-win for everyone. The LNA OPP auxiliary unit provided more than 3,000 volunteer hours in 2024, attending more than 58 community events. And in that period, we also recognized three of our auxiliary members who had served more than 2,500 volunteer hours in their time as auxiliary. So quite remarkable and each one of these individuals come from a retired full-time career and you know, continue to be part of the community and to put that many hours in and to be a regular presence around our offices, quite remarkable. We've also worked closely with municipal Greater Napanee, as I said, the CCTV system which has expanded. We're certainly encouraging any other communities to give it some consideration because it truly is a valuable tool and having that video evidence for our investigations allows us to have real evidence. It saves a lot of time when it comes to court because you've got video evidence. Just the time it takes us to investigate and get any leads on any investigations is much, much quicker. The CCTV actually has AI technology built into it too. So for example, we've used it to locate a missing person by providing a description and it searches through its database and narrows down and provides us video footage of individuals and match that. And through that, we've been able to identify a small geographic area where we're able to concentrate our efforts and we locate that person. We've also looked for a pickup truck that was involved in a crime, knowing that it had decals on the back, had a lift kit and it was between a certain time period. The technology and the camera was able to narrow down and provide us the trucks that were on the, captured in that timeframe through the system and it was being housed in the cloud, so it's been great for that. We also are big promoters of the CAM Safe program, which I have spoken to in the past and this is really about community and police working together. And CAM Safe, and it's C-A-M-Safe dot, I believe CA or dot com for those who want to look it up, but it is available on the internet and it's, it's not a police program. It's really, it's a community program where people can sign up on this website indicating that they have what could be a doorbell camera or some other type of camera on your house. Nobody has access to it, but what it does tell the police or the municipality that if they're ever looking for video evidence, that that house has video available. And through that, then we can make contact. So that has come in handy for us. Loyalist Township I know is, is working to further promote it for us. And again, with the CCTV technology, CAM Safe, those sort of things where our community works with police, we can make significant progress and more appropriately or more effectively use our resources to keep our community safe and solve crime. And finally, just some quick local statistics for our detachment. In 2024, our officers were dispatched to 29,901 calls and of those 11,001 calls required immediate response where there was some type of, some type of danger involved. Our violent crime for Lennings and Addington, our calls were up from 2023, we're up 64 calls in 2024 from 23. That 595 to 659. We did see though, there was a reduction in sexual assaults. Where the number did increase was from our common assaults. So common assaults can be altercations between two individuals, domestic violence and those are some of the most common incidents that we would respond to where we would see assaults involved. Our property crimes, our totals, total calls were 978 in 2024. That's down 196 calls from where it was in 2023 with 23 being 1,174 and 978 in 2024. The greatest reduction in our property crimes was actually thefts and we're pleased to see that frauds were, had been reduced. And we like to attribute that to the outreach or community outreach and the, or some of our education campaigns. Impaired driving charges were up, so that's our charges. We're up 281 charges versus 241 in 2023. And as far as our staffing, Lennings and Addington OPP did receive from the government an enhancement of four additional officers, which we hopefully see in 2025. And this is part of a broader OPP plan. We call it a service delivery model where the Ontario government has recognized that certain detachments do require additional officers just to meet the current demands and our detachment, I don't have the specific number, but there's an allotment to us and so we're seeing four actually coming in in 2025, which is going to be quite welcome and really what it does is puts one more member on each shift. And finally, in 2025, well, this, this past year, we work closely with our detachment board. I'm a, I'm a big advocate for it, I've worked with detachment boards in the past, I see so many benefits from it. Things like ride grants, grants that normally communities don't have access to because they don't have a detachment or police service board in place, we now do, our communities do. We can leverage some of this grant funding through our detachment board. So for example, we've just recently submitted grant funding for our festive ride program which will start this fall. So that gives us money in order to pay for overtime, to have our officers in who specifically are out there to do festive ride in, on all of our communities. And as part of establishing that trusting relationship with our board and with our, our Chair, Councillor Bob Norrie from Greater Napanee, him and I attended the Ontario Association of Police Service Boards together in London. It was a, it was a great conference. We've, we've, we've had some great meetings with the detachment board and what we've been trying to do at each board is bringing a different part of our work in to introduce it to the board so that they have a better understanding for the services available in our community and the work that we do. Our first meeting, we had our community street crime unit in and I know we've had them here actually to the community safety table. Detective Sergeant Dave Horowitz came in. So our community street crime is a unit within our detachment who focuses on community issues involving property crime or drugs. And over the last, last half year in particular, there's been some great news releases about the work this team's done. They've, they've seized and taken off our streets a significant amount of fentanyl through their intelligence and the work they do. And again, this is all work that is separate from what we commonly see on the road and our frontline officers patrolling. These are units, these are our officers who, who are working behind the scenes and so many great successes over this last year. So we introduced our team and since then, we've had some great press releases come out and I'm quick to share them with the detachment board and say, see, this is the team that we were talking about. So and then the last one we had was our community engagement officer, Constable Martin Curran and he's a uniform member and he actually works in the same office as our MCERT workers. And we invited MCERT and Constable Curran to speak to the detachment board and all the work they're doing. And it was very well received, a lot of great questions. And I think people were quite impressed to hear that the police and our social services are working so closely together and in fact, we're working in the same building. And as a detachment commander, I tell you that I often see these MCERT workers and they're just one of us. I don't see them as social service in our building, they're just part of the team. And you sometimes forget that they're actually not OPP members, that's how closely we work together. So a lot of great stuff ahead in 2025, moving into 2026. And as I said, we'll be working with all of our communities to build our next action plan. And what's exciting about this is not just your detachment commander coming up with what I think is the priority is we really will be working with our community through our detachment board to establish those plans and hold ourselves accountable to delivering on that plan for our communities. And with that, I'm done, just to staff anything like that. And Reeve Vogg, if there's any questions of yourself or, or the members here, more unhappy, whether it be about the action or about the annual report or anything else that we do.
Thank you. Does anyone have any? Ken?
Thank you Commander for coming up with Sergeant Al. Okay, Al, I have a question about the marine unit since you've been up here so much and I was wondering if there was, I know when you, when you're in a boat, there's so many things you have to have. You have to have your, your PFDs, your, your anchor, your license. There's so many things, I was just wondering if there's anything that you have zero tolerance on that you would lay a fine on the spot, probably like alcohol? Or so many of these other ones that you've mentioned, do you give a warning to the people? And is that at the discretion of the officer?
Through your worship. So I mean, every, every interaction, we always encourage first of all is education. So, I mean, every, every interaction, we always encourage, first of all, is education. But there are things, and ultimately it comes down to, as you said, sir, is the officer's discretion. So we do trust our officers and their experience and their profession to, to exercise discretion. But I would say, if, if you were to speak to a marine operator, typically the two things that there is very, very low tolerance for is alcohol and personal flotation devices ultimately. And, and I've, you know, in 26 years of talking to marine operators, they, if it involves children, then there's, there's going to be barriers. But at the end of the day, we, we do rely on the professionalism and discretion of our officers. But those are the two areas where we don't have a lot of tolerance for. And I can say, I know that in speaking to our marine operator, they, the focus up here, I know last year we worked tightly with our community group and we worked on the Scudimata a lot. I talked to the marine this morning about it. We had a meeting with our marine folks this morning and we discussed specifically Scudimata and the camping issues that we experienced last year. And they said this year, they, they were up on the lake at least three times, if he recalled, at least that one operator, we have three operators. So I just talked to one of them this morning. They were on the Scudimata three times that he was personally, he said he checked all the boat launches and the camping issue was, was not an issue that they saw at all. So we definitely had an impact there. And that was in working in Quark, pretty sure with that ride with the safe team that the inspector spoke about. So last year, remember we had the, we had a heavy presence with the ATVs and then we also had our marine guys. So we checked all the boat launches this year and we had good compliance. And then they had very good reception from the folks on Scudimata this year for sure. The, the compliance with alcohol and PFDs was, was very good. Where we had a lot of challenges was certainly Bonn Echo. Bonn Echo took a lot of our marine time and there's a tremendous amount of enforcement up there, but it's, this inspector's already spoken to that. So that's a little more than you want it, but I wanted to make sure we tell us on Scudimata because that, that one was very, that continued to be important this year for sure.
Right. Thank you.
Any other? Helen.
You mentioned distracted driving. How do you know when somebody's a distracted driver? I mean, I think I know when I'm driving on the road and I'm just driving up to Northbrook. Can you see 10 people like this, you know? Just how do you know?
So we, a lot of the enforcement that we, the initiative we took for distracted driving was to target our fatalities because in 2023, we did see a rise in fatalities. And, and what we typically, we, we target what we call the big four. And one of the big fours, so it's impaired driving, speeding, alcohol and seatbelts are the four major offenses that we have found are causations for serious collisions. So one of the ones we targeted was distracted driving. And we've all seen the driver that's weaving in the lane that, you know, it could be, could be attributed to a substance or it could be more commonly nowadays it is attributed to these nasty little devices that are tied to our hip. So what we might believe versus what we can prove, the, the standard of evidence to charge someone for the offense is, the offense is, is having the mobile device in your hand and using it. So we have to be able to provide evidence to the court that an individual is actively using the device. A big piece of that is our, is the technology we give our officers now. So the in-car cameras, they document the driving, the body camera that the officers wear. When we're doing enforcement on four-lane highways or for instance, there are, there are opportunities on seven where our cameras can actually capture the individual on, on their, on their phones or at intersections, we do enforcement at intersections where again, the body camera, we walk up to a car and there'll be a person sitting there right on the phone. So the standard of evidence is very high because the penalties are very high now. And the, the insurance companies within Canada are taking distracted driving very seriously because it is one of the four major causations towards fatalities. So it's a, it's a, it's a huge social issue now, but the standard of evidence in court is quite high. So it's not enough to think or know it, we have to be able to prove it.
Tony.
Yes, thanks, Henry. I have a question. What I find is there was probably, never a week goes by where I'm sitting around talking with some people and their experience driving is like taking your life into your hands. And, and it's, what you hear is really appears to be just a, a major lack of care or regard for anyone else, people passing in unbelievable spots, blind corners, just pulling out even with traffic coming, passing huge, long lines of traffic, forcing people off the road, putting people, you know, at risk and just appears to be complete lack of common sense of when you actually pull out to overtake another vehicle. It, it's, you could hardly go on the road and take a half hour trip without experiencing that once. And I, I don't know how you deal with that. It's just, it's the attitude that appears that many drivers have and lack of regard for anyone else or their life.
Yep. So that sounds like a conversation we have every morning at the detachment. You know, it is true. And what, what is, what is the answer? I, I don't know. I know we're leveraging the technology we have, the resources we have. You know, we, we pivot and try different things. But, you know, for us, it's, it's about presence. And that's the one thing that we are always harping on our officers is to make sure that, you know, a lot of our, a lot of the things the officer do, I talk with the in-car camera, the body worn camera and having their phone available now so they can do a lot of work and editing of this stuff and put it up into the incident. So it's, it's there for court. We're asking our officers, even when you have those downtimes, to find strategic locations to park yourself and just be present. And you may not be running Ride but, or Radar, but it's just that police presence in our community so that it's a deterrent. And so, you know, it's funny because we will sometimes get people saying, yeah, I saw an officer. It looks like he was just sitting at the, at a particular intersection on his phone. It's like, you're probably right, he probably was on his phone, but you have no idea that phone is linked to all his technology in his car and the work he's doing is all actually being driven from that, from that phone or from the tablet. But so, yeah, there, there's not a magic formula, presence, 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 enforcement, education. And we just met with our traffic management. So our detachment has two full-time traffic management officers. And so they're called traffic management because there's a great part of it is the enforcement piece and there's the management piece. And so management's working with our townships and roads and, and our EDR and making sure that those are always current. And if we have a large collision scene where we have to manage traffic, they are really the coordinators that, that kind of manage our way through that particular event. So our traffic management officers, they're, they're, they field all the traffic complaints that come in that, that we can realistically get to. We get a lot of complaints in the 401 from people, a lot of complaints saying, you know, there's a particular vehicle and it's swerving in and out. But as you could appreciate, different times of day with the congestion, it's near impossible for us to really get this vehicle stopped. We'd cause more commotion on the highway trying to get to the vehicle. So it's very, very difficult, but presence and education, these are things we talk about every day. But we see it too. And, you know, leveraging technology and, and those sort of things. With the distracted driving, where we are on our highways, we do have a certain number of our fleet, our unmarked vehicles, some of them are higher platform vehicles, does give us that opportunity to look down into cars and, and see it. And we call, you know, so usually we'd be initiative where we'd have some other cruisers out there and they would intercept those vehicles as we call them out. So we try everything and, but it's just one thing I, I'm, I'm pleased to say is, I think if you talk to most people and they're going through the Napanee area, they know to slow down. That's a one reputation we do have. I was, I was north last year and talking to some people, some citizens. And I'm talking like north and just they're like, oh, I have family down in the Kingston area. It's like, yeah, I know the Napanee area. It's one area we always have to be slow when we drive through. So that's a reputation we're quite proud of. So that's because we really do believe in that police presence.
And Ken.
I have one more question, if I may, Reeve Hogg. On a more local note, are you aware of some of the problems we're having at our waste sites with vandalism, theft and trespassing, of course? After hours. Now, I know Brett, no, is very much aware of the problems we had at Coward, where a container was broken into and understand the lock was broken off the container and tools were taken and theft of metals. And I heard on the weekend that the coin site had a, they were trespassing at night and they stole a bunch of cans that are designated for the Lions. That's how they make their money through the cans. So I'm wondering what we have to do to prevent this.
To those specifics, I'm not familiar with those specific incidents.
So I'm assuming you want everything reported, right? When there's stuff like this? So I'm assuming these haven't been reported?
I'm not saying they haven't, I'm just not, I'm not particularly aware of those incidents. I can certainly, I will follow up on them and look into them. But a key component is always reporting. If we are not aware of an incident, then we can't address it. But in those types of instances, there's definitely things that we would want to be part of.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right. I'm sure we'll talk more about, I'll have more details at our 16th meeting on that.
I'll, as soon as I go back to the office, I'll look them up. If they've been reported, then I'll be able to find them and find out what's going on, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other? If not, I need a motion to receive the report. Councillor Yance, Deputy Reeve Fritsch, any further questions? Ready for the vote, Councillor Thompson?
Yes.
Sir Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Now, so yes.
Yes.
That motion is carried. Thank you very much. Okay. Matters for consideration, Mazinah Community Fund, we've got correspondence from the Northbrook Medical Center. Yes, we need a motion to approve that.
Yeah, if, if council's wanting to do that, I had a, a great meeting with the executive director of the Lakelands Family Health Team as well as Ian Brummel. And they were, a couple of things that they had identified as what they would like to see improved. And one of them is the concrete landing under that covered carport. It, it is actually, and it's been on our radar for quite some time. So I think as, as a priority for that facility, that, that's an excellent project. They are wanting to also, what we talked about was replacing that sign. And as council is aware, that sign is one of the items slated to be replaced with our sign project. So I, I still have to forward what our concept is for that facility to, to Jan and to Ian. But that is another item that they are looking at, at funding. So all we simply need to do is just receive this and approve it if council so wishes. I will let council know that to be a bit proactive, I did task Dave with reaching out to some concrete folks to get some prices and quotes on, on that. So that's in the works. I do have two more to send to you that Ian had provided me. Yeah. So unless council has any questions?
Ken.
I, I think it's very commendable that Marg Axford and Ian Brummel have stepped up again. I understand they funded the generator for the Lakelands Family Health Team. But I think it shows that the importance of appearances on the family health team. And I know we've been trying to work towards that for several years. And I'm hopefully, I'm hopefully this will be put to the front burner and we get it done because it's, it's something that's important for a lot of people for sure. And anyways, I think that's it.
Helen.
I'd, I'd like to make a motion to receive and approve that these two projects.
Secondary? Councillor Hook? David, did you have a question?
No. I just wanted to comment on the fact that I have reached out, as Christine said, to a couple of contractors here. So all the contractors right at the moment are extremely busy. So they, they've put me on the calendar, but they haven't gone back to me yet. So I am working on it. Thanks.
Any other comments? If not, ready for the vote, Councillor Thompson?
Yes.
Councillor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Councillor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Okay, we got a request from St. John, the Evangelist Roman Catholic Church for exemption. Councillor Yance?
I'd make a motion to approve this.
Secondary? Deputy Reeve Fritsch? Comments? If not ready for the vote, Councillor Thompson?
Yes.
Councillor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Councillor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Okay, we got a request from Sandra Miller that we turn Chippewa down the road. Ken.
I thought a few months ago, was it strategic planning that we're talking about? Or maybe in budgeting long-term that there was, it was stated that we're not looking to hard surface any more gravel roads at this time. Is that correct? That was my understanding, I think.
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, yeah, we're not looking to upgrade any roads to any higher service than what they are now type of thing. So that would include no additional hardtop at this time, so.
And, and I'm sure there's many people that would love to have the gravel road hardtop. And, and I'm sure if we ever look at that, that'll be kind of, there's many factors that go into it, right?
Yeah, roads need study that would identify priorities, I would think. Anyway. Ken, do you want to make a motion? Or Helen?
Just a comment, I guess I can see where this lady, I, I mean, I can appreciate what she's saying. She's saying there's the traffic has increased substantially and you have four-wheelers and side-by-sides driving at a high rate of speed and wrecking the road basically is what they're doing and making trenches. And we, and we know that that isn't acceptable. So I'm just wondering if there is any solution at all that we could help with. I, I realize we are going to be doing any hardtop or anything like that, but maybe police presence? Anyway, they, we know what they, what four-wheelers can do to a road. It's not good.
What's your?
Is there a motion on the floor?
Not yet, I don't believe so. Go ahead.
Well, I'd make a motion to receive this and then a response letter going to Sandra Miller stating what our policy is and that there's many roads that have similar problems. So the plan right now is that we are not taking on new hard surface road projects.
Is there a secondary for that motion? Deputy Reeve Fritsch? Further comments? Ready for the vote, Councillor Thompson?
Yes.
Councillor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Councillor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Now we've got a proposed, proposal from the Demi Griffith Alliance Club. So any park bench in the community, what's your wishes? Tony.
I can speak to it briefly if you wish, I won't, won't go through it all. So the proposal is in front of you. But it was the Demi Griffith Alliance Club that brought this up. They wanted to contribute something to the community and the playground area was one that they had noticed to their, their, that there was some need because they had just observed parents sometimes just sitting in their vehicle while the kids were at the playground. So yes, they're proposing to provide a couple benches and they have a photo of the design. And I think the only real issue, it's not an issue, it's something just to be worked through is I know there's some additional work being planned for the playground and I think that's September or maybe September, I'm not sure when they're going to do the final work.
Is it October now?
So maybe in October?
Yeah.
So that work would need to be done prior to it. And then taking a look at, at the site and, and determining where they would sit. So I mean, it could bump this thing, the actual location determination, maybe till late October, possibly. We, we want to see that done first. So that's the proposal. I'd make a motion that we approve this. There's actually a recommendation there. So I'd make a motion along the lines of those words and the recommendation.
Is there a secondary? Councillor Yance, any further comments? Ready for the vote, Councillor Thompson?
Yes.
Councillor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Councillor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Now we've got trick or treat. Trick or treat in Van Halen, October 31st. Councillor Hook?
I'd like to make a motion that we receive and accept the request, support the request.
Seconded by Councillor Yance. Any comments, questions? If not ready for the vote, Councillor Thompson?
Yes.
Councillor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Counselor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Now we've got a request to allow amplified music at the trick-or-treat event. Five to eight. Ken, Tony?
I'd make a motion to receive and approve.
Second by Counselor Yance. Any comments? Ready for the vote? Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Counselor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. And we've got a resolution from the Township of North Glengarry concerning recycling. Ken?
I'd like to make a motion to support. This is along the same lines as our own Waste Management Committee has decided on that. They need to accept everything. So support that.
The secondary? Deputy Reeve Fritsch? Comments, questions? Ready for the vote? Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Counselor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Now we've got a resolution from the Township of Armore. Now, I, as Chair of the Local Family Health Team, have some concerns about this. First off, most of the funding is provided by the province. So unless we want to step up and provide a whole lot more funding, I don't know how we can request to have a whole lot more say. But that's, and I'm not sure how much of it's confidential information. Anyway, I, I believe that the family health team that we have locally has concurred with most of the things that they're talking about, like we've increased the membership, made it mostly a community-based members. And like you say, the funding is, I'd say 90% provided by the province. Tony?
Yeah, well, and we don't directly fund it. We don't directly fund their operations, just the facilities. We subsidize because we can't recover all the costs.
So I think a motion to receive. Helen?
I guess I don't have any problem asking for the Province of Ontario to implement a standardized and mandatory governance.
I think they already have.
And I don't think that's a problem. So I don't know whether maybe other municipalities, I don't think we have an issue here, but maybe other municipalities or other family health teams do. But I, I would make a motion to receive.
Second by Counselor Hook? Further comments? Tony?
Yes, Henry, I agree with the motion, but just a comment is, can we, can we ask? Just follow up on that question as to what the governance model is? Just so we under, just so we're aware, members of council? I mean, if you're, we are involved, you may know, but the rest of us don't. So.
Yeah, I guess that's
That wouldn't have
that information is likely all in the public record.
Probably public, yeah.
The, the funding?
Yeah.
I'm not sure if it is.
No, no. So I'm not suggesting the motion be changed, just a comment on that.
Okay, we got a motion ready for the vote. Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Counselor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. We've got a resolution from the Town of Gardwich. Capital cost of infrastructure. Development charges. What's your wishes? Counselor Hook?
We've had similar motions like this before. And because we don't have development charges per se here, I think we in the past, we, we just voted to receive it. So I'll make a motion to receive.
Secondary? Deputy Reeve Fritsch? Comments or questions? Ready for the vote? Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Counselor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Now we got the resolution. Another resolution from the Town of Gardwich concerning the soil that is ground by soil is essential to Canada's economic, environmental, human, and social health. Counselor, Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
I make a motion to receive and support.
Secondary? Counselor Thompson? Any comments? Ready for the vote? Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Counselor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Now we got a resolution from the municipality of West Nipissing concerning spraying, aerial spraying. Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
So the MNRF has called off that spraying for this year? In, in that, that program has been parked until and I don't know, one thing they had been lobbying for there was some more consultation and work to be done. So it, it, their announcement didn't say that directly that I could find, but it certainly, it put a hold on it for 2025.
Received it.
Yeah. I'd make a motion to receive it.
Yep. Second by Counselor Hook? Any comments? Ready for the vote? Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Counselor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Now we got a resolution from the municipality of Tweed concerning incineration. Counselor Hook?
If the information is correct that Counselor Pleeler has provided, and I'm assuming it is, where he's saying that Germany, well, we know Germany is one of the most technological advanced countries on earth. And that they found a way to, to build 156 municipal thermal waste incineration projects, which produce electricity and they also recycle 66%, which is a high number. I think is probably something that we should look at. I can remember in the mid 2000s, myself as part of a joint committee with North Frontenac, visited Leona de Brovsky at her office in Toronto about municipal incineration. And that was a dirty word, a word back then. That wasn't something in the, I don't think liberal vocabulary back then. But you know, things have changed. And if there's a good solution in Germany, I, I think we would be amiss to not even look at it. Because I, I guess I've always been a firm believer that municipalities should have their garbage in their own municipality. I, I see on the news that a small community north around Sarnia Dresden has been slated to accept a huge mega site of garbage because Premier Ford thinks that President Trump may no longer allow Canadian garbage in the U.S., so we better have a backup. So they're building a big site there and they are forecasting 700 transport trucks of garbage per day going into that small community. And they say the traffic's so bad now they can hardly get a tractor out on the highway. So it's, this is certainly a big, big problem and
Plastics is terrible.
Yeah. So I would, I would support this resolution. We look into it.
Receive and support. Secondary with Counselor Yance. Further questions? Tony?
Another question, Henry, just a comment. It was probably 13 or 14 years ago, I think, I believe it was the municipality of Quinney West, because a couple of members of council went, went to a, I'm gonna call it a forum, an evening discussion among representatives from a bunch of municipalities in this area. And that's exactly what was being proposed at the time. And they were working diligently on trying to get enough support. It just fizzled out at the time, but even that long ago, the technology was there and, and well-proven at that time. So.
So that's all, all it was the reason why it wasn't, the main reason for discontinuing between North Frontenac and Annington House, I believe. I wasn't involved in it.
Well, there's certainly smaller plants now. And I, I looked online for the ones in Germany that they're using and they make a smaller plant. They have scrubbers on it. They have a way of taking out all the metals from the ash that's left over. And it's very clean. And at the same time, they have a steam boiler on it that can generate electricity. So I think it appears like it's a very clean way, but it's very, very technology-heavy and likely very expensive. But.
Just a, a comment too, that I remember a few years back, wasn't there a place in Ottawa that was supposed to, they were trying to get the incinerator? But I think it was going to be so large and they didn't even have enough stuff to sort of get it started. So it, it would be nice if we could work something through to have an incinerator. I think it'd be a great project as well as some of the other comments he makes on here too.
Yeah. Okay. So we've got a motion and a secondary. Any further comments? Ready for the vote? Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Counselor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Matters for information? Motion to receive. Counselor Thompson, second by Counselor Yance. Guess I'd like to point out on the first item that this mention of storage of some sort of property? Blankets or whatever it might be, quilts? I assume that's meaning the township?
Yes. And the quilts that they're talking about are barn quilts. So they're wooden, wooden plaques. But certainly, yeah, we certainly will make arrangements for that if council wishes.
Anyway, I guess I need a motion to receive. Got that? Okay. Deputy Reeve Fritsch, second by Counselor, Counselor Hook?
No, I did have Counselor Thompson and Counselor Yance. Yeah.
Okay. Sorry about that. Any further questions or comments? Ready for the vote? Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Counselor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. So we've got the meeting minutes from the Working Group for Waste Division and Waste Management. You motion to receive those? Counselor, Deputy Reeve Fritsch, Counselor Hook, excuse me, Counselor Hook? Any questions or comments? Yes.
Thanks, Henry. I don't know if you have any comments, Brett, but one thing that was discussed even back in that meeting. And then we had another, the working group had another meeting on August 19th and we have another one coming up. Had to do with non-eligible sources, which they call ICI, which is sort of indie industrial, commercial or institutional. And it was already in another agenda item. They were referring to it. That's something that's being worked through and it's, it appears, the biggest issue there is certainly in our community, is we have a lot, we really don't have any industrial, but we certainly have a fair number of commercial businesses and trying to ensure that there are some means for their recycling to be collected in this program. So that's being worked on and certainly right across the province, it's, it's a point of discussion right now. Just a comment. Thank you. I'd make a motion. Do we have a motion to receive? We do. Okay. Thank you.
Further comments? Ready for the vote? Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Counselor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Okay, Detachment Board Municipal meeting on July 31st. I need a motion to receive those. Counselor Yance, second by Counselor Hook? Questions, comments? Ready for the vote? Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Counselor Yance?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Now we've got another apportion, apportionment of the budget. I guess I need a motion to approve that, do we? Counselor Hook? Counselor, Deputy Reeve Fritsch? Any questions or comments? Ready for the vote? Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Counselor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Okay. Reports of officers. Roads and waste, Brett?
This is our update, I guess. It's short and sweet this month. So we're continuing our ditching on Upper Flinton Road. We're doing grading as conditions and the weather allow. It's with this dry weather, it makes it really tough to, to grade unless you can catch it after a rainstorm. We can run our water truck pretty steady grading, but it's, it's tough to keep up when you're trying to grade with the dry conditions that we have. Mowing's complete throughout the township, but we're still doing some roadside brushing with our, with our tractor mower. As far as waste sites go, operations at the waste sites are continuing as usual. And summer volume seems to be continuing to be steady with the nice weather, right? So it'll probably go right through to Thanksgiving if it stays nice like this. So.
Any questions or comments on the report? I need a motion to receive. Counselor Hook? Deputy Reeve Fritsch? Ready for the vote? Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Counselor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Now we've got a winter sand RFQ.
Yeah. So we had our winter sand RFQ closed August 21st. We had two bidders for each of the two separate RFQs. Budget, as far as the money goes, the budget, this was included in our budget. And my recommendation was to award RFQ 202505 to Danforth Construction and RFQ 2025-06 to RJ Cell. The results are there. The Northbrook one was the same. And the Demby one was a little bit less this year because there wasn't a, the stripping to do and the processing. Cause we're, we have some, we had some excess material processed in previous years. We're gonna put it into the dome and use it up. So.
Any questions on that? You need a motion to approve? Counselor Yance, Deputy Reeve Fritsch? Ready for the vote? Counselor Thompson?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve Fritsch?
Yes.
Counselor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Thank you, Brett. Okay, CBO?
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. CBO report for the month of September. I know it's just the beginning, but I'll give you an update. Building permits issued continue to lag well behind last year's numbers. I think we're closing on permits numbering 60. And we've got almost 30 septic permits out there. These generated by both building permits and septic hovering around that $100,000 mark. That's project fees collected. Yeah, and I, I, I hope we continue to grow that out a little bit headed into the end of the year. I'm hoping to get to 75% of what we did last year. Still a lot of interest coming in. And it's just a matter of getting all those details thrashed out and the permits out. Always a big job, my end of this and planning's end of the, planning's end of the deal. Facilities report, canopy project at the AC is taking shape. I'm sure if anyone's had a look at it. it, I think it looks terrific. Contractors have poured the concrete and framing is well underway. Finished product will allow very nice entrance portal to either access the building or a quiet sheltered area to enjoy a good read, so looking forward to that project being finished. Playground area at Northbrook has been vandalized, and I'm talking about skate park area. It was very, very serious. Graffiti sprayed almost over every inch of it. It was just tragic, and some of the vulgarities that were written on the skateboard area were just totally offensive. We since cleaned that up, but it's not cheap. We had to get, we had to get a company in to sandblast it all. No other way around that. Typical playground equipment, we can get some graffiti remover, works very well, but when it comes to concrete, doesn't touch it. And so I was quite disappointed about that, and we're kind of, we've got the area under surveillance now, and I would ask anyone with any information on those responsible for all of that, to please contact us or the OPP. Moving on to bylaw enforcement. Running of dogs is becoming a continuous problem. Can't emphasize that enough. I don't know how many times the animal control officer and myself have been out to many, many sites investigating and trying to get these situations under control. We did manage to get the one under control here in Flinton. Residents have since moved out, as well as the dogs are, have, have been taken with them, I presume. But there's still a lot of, a lot of that situation transpiring. Very disheartening. A lot of these situations, I go back time and time again, and we do have, we do have a fine system in place. And I've made mention here, for anyone listening, please note that the maximum number of dogs on a property is three without account of license. A dog tag is required for each dogs, and dogs must be kept on a leash when outside or in a fenced-in area. Dogs running at large will be picked up by the animal control bylaw officer and impounded. Impound fees can be substantial. So I put that out there. I know, you know, our animal control bylaw officer is busy enough, but it's more than that. It's about the safety of the community when you've got dogs running at large. People on bicycles, people walk, elderly people walk this community, and they walk throughout the community all the time, and there's nothing like a leisurely walk on a cool summer's night, and there's no reason that dogs should be running loose. So, I have no sympathy or empathy for that type of situation, so we are tackling it and tackling it with severity. So please, if you own a dog, and you're outside with it, keep it on a leash or keep it in a fenced-in area. And that is my report. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions of David? Ken?
Regarding the graffiti at the sand park, that's, that's pretty sad, because on the list of the accounts, it shows almost $3,400. It's gonna cost all of us for that. So that, that's really sad, and I'm wondering, have we reported that one to the, to the OPP? Because they're telling us to report everything. So have we?
No, we have not, and...
Shall we?
Yes, certainly.
That's what they're asking us. So they have a record on this, and including the sets and the break-ins and the waste sites, they want everything reported, and this just builds a history for these people that are hopefully one day gonna come, come in front of a judge.
Yep.
They gotta have that back, background history, so.
You know, $3,400 is...
It's a lot of money.
Is a lot of money.
Yeah.
And like, as you mentioned, Ken, it comes right from the taxpayers' pockets.
That's the only place we, yeah? Helen?
And also, you mentioned that it's now under surveillance. Does that mean you have cameras up?
We have signs. And I think I can say the possibility of other measures are being considered.
Yeah, that's my next, is it time to have cameras? I think it is.
Cameras, we tried cameras a few years ago at one of the waste sites, and they were stolen.
Well, I'm sure we could figure out a way to make them, and for $3,400, maybe we could come up with something.
I guess I need a motion to receive David's report. Deputy Reece French, seconded by Counselor Yance, ready for the vote. Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reece French?
Yes.
Counselor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. CIO Municipal Election.
Thank you.
Can we just pass them?
It was, it was shocking actually to do this report, to think that approximately one year today we'll be at nomination day. Time, time flies by really fast.
Been fun.
So, there's been a lot of discussion in the, with the county clerks of jointly procuring internet and telephone voting services. So, I thought it would be timely to bring this report back to coun, or to bring it to council. One very similar was brought to council in 2021. So what I did was I just outlined some of the timelines that candidates and electors needed to be aware of. So obviously, the next municipal election is gonna take place on October 26, 2026. I've listed a bunch of different deadlines in here. The most important ones, I think, are the opening of the nomination period that starts in, in May, so May 1st. Nomination day is the 3rd Friday in August, so that's when nominations close that day. And then voting day, of course, is the 26th of October, with the new term starting November 15th. Shortly thereafter would be our very first inaugural meeting. One thing I wanted to remind council, just to be sure that we're still okay with the bylaw that was passed in 2021. The Municipal Election Act stipulates that the council of a local municipality may pass bylaws authorizing electors to use an alternative voting method, such as voting by mail or by telephone, that does not require electives, electors to attend in a voting place in order to vote. The Township of Addington Highland passed a bylaw in 2022 authorizing the use of alternative voting, voting method for the '22 election and all subsequent elections thereafter, as this has been our practice since 2020, 2006. So I've attached the bylaw that council passed back in 2021, just for information purposes, to be sure that we're all okay with that, and to let council know that unless we have a change of heart on how we'd like to proceed, I will be participating with the clerks of the other lower-tier municipalities in the county to procure those services. Does anyone have any questions? Just a motion to receive, unless of course, there is direction to...
Ken? So, last election, did we deal directly with the company that provided the internet services? Or were we in with a group of other municipalities?
We were in with a group of other municipalities. We've done this, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be honest, this is, this one will only be my third election, but we've done a group purchasing for the last three, and I know that the former clerk was also involved in procuring that alternative services with a group of municipalities. I will note that that group has expanded. More and more municipalities are getting on board with the alternative voting methods, but we've done that for the last three elections. I will add that there does seem to be cost savings when you are procuring for multiple municipalities, yeah.
Helen?
Just a comment. I think it's very wise that we have two systems to be able to use electric, and the telephone.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think some do struggle a little bit with, with the online portion of it. The telephone seems to be, to work out very well. And then not to forget too, we do have voting centers that you could come in and get assistance. So whether that be assistance by using the telephone or assistance through, through the online portion, we had kiosks that set up the last time, which literally you just had to, to use the touchscreen to make your selections. So we have those available in both, both wards on multiple, multiple occasions.
If I may, also, is there any way we could remind the public that if they have property in not only where their home is, but in another municipality, they have a right to vote in both those places? So if you have a home in Toronto and you have a cottage here, you can vote in Toronto and you can vote here. So I think that's very important, because we get, I know I have a lot of people that, oh, no, no, I can't vote, or if you have property in Alberta and you wanna vote here because you have property here, you have a right to do that.
Absolutely, and we'll be creating some media releases. There's some changes that are happening to the, how the voters list is being compiled this year. Normally, that would have been a function solely of Empax. Elections Ontario is taking that over. I'm sure it's gonna go fantastic.
Oh, somehow.
Some, some of the, the work has already started, so we can get onto that portal right now and, and have a look. I, to your point, we are the only election where you can do that. If you're voting federally or provincially, you get one vote, one vote only. So, I'm hopeful that Elections Ontario is gonna be able to navigate, navigate through that, but the portal is currently open, and staff does now have the ability to ensure that, that that information is correct, but we will be doing media releases to alert the public exactly who can vote, who has the right to vote, who is eligible to vote.
Any other, Ken?
I'm just trying to refresh my memory. Last election as well, didn't we receive something in the mail first? Did we get a code or something to sign it? So we also have to depend on Canada Post still being with us by next election, and it won't be a strike, or even if there is a Canada Post by then?
That is such a valid point, and I think that will be part of the discussions when we're looking at service providers for this. It would be the same, so my understanding, this predates me, but prior to 2006, we only did mail-in ballots, so that was the same process except twice, right? We mail out the ballots, then we had to have the ballots mailed back in.
We had on-site.
Pools as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we do have a lot of electors. Oh goodness. We have a lot of electors, electors who aren't local, so we wanna make sure that everyone has the same access to being able to vote. So that will be a conversation with the...
Unfortunately, it hasn't resulted in a tremendous increase in participation, no matter how simple it is.
I know. We're still hovering around that 30%. Be great if we could...
Should be, yeah, but 50% would be unbelievable. Any other questions or comments? Hard to believe that it's, well, yours is coming, yeah.
I know. Well, yeah.
Anyway, I need a motion to receive this report. Counselor Yance, seconded by Deputy Reece French. Further comments or questions? Ready for the vote. Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reece French?
Yes.
Counselor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Okay, nothing from the Prime Secretary and Deputy Treasurer. Appointees, anything happen?
Meeting on Monday for Mississippi.
About Quinny?
Yeah, one on, one on Thursday.
Okay. Approval of the accounts as of August 31st. Need a motion to approve. Deputy Reece French, Counselor Hook?
I have a question?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I see on the, the Rush Truck Center, there's, there's a fee there for oil pan change. Was there more involved in that than just that, when you consider the price of it?
That was a main portion of the, of the cost there. There was, there was a little bit more that was done, but I'm gonna say that probably 70% of that was for the oil pan change, so.
Really, yeah?
Yeah.
That's a lot of money. Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Any other questions? You've got a motion ready for the vote. Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reece French?
Yes.
Counselor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. I'm having a terrible time. Members' statements. New business. I had occasion to attend the Ashby Lake Property Owners Association meeting on the, I think it was the 9th of August, I believe it was, and they had a few questions that I am bringing to council. First was the Ashby Lake waste site. We were wondering about monitoring of that site. I don't believe we currently, I'm not sure how to respond to them. It's been closed for 30 years.
So currently, we are not monitoring that site. We did have staff in the office look to see if we could find some old records, and she did, and we were able to locate some. It's saved on our O Drive, but we do have to review those just to see what those records entailed. I haven't had a chance to, to look through those, but I can confirm that we are not currently monitoring that site.
I know. And the one other thing they were wondering about was an identification sign saying you're Ashby Lake, similar to what we have for the Hamlets. So I, I told them to be, we would be in touch with them, and, because we have a, it'd be nice if it was part of the sort of standard we're working on right now. There's a dock at the, where the boathouses and docks that were put in a couple of years ago. There's a public dock there, and they were wondering about whose responsibility that was. Originally, I believe, was a provincial site, and it was, I don't know if it was downloaded or just abandoned. I suspect abandoned. So, they decided that they would likely go ahead and do some maintenance on it. I suggested that if they requested financial assistance, we might be able to help. I couldn't promise anything. The fourth thing was the mountain road. How many people are familiar? I'm not sure when it became a municipal seasonal road, but it is. I guess Rose Department had put some pit run gravel on it, is that correct? Yeah. They would like to have seen some, something a little more substantial, I guess, so I'm not sure. If you haven't driven the road, you don't know what I'm talking about. But anyway, I've talked to Brett about this, I'm just bringing it up that it had a record. Not really much, Tony.
Henry, the dock they were talking about is, are these just the, sort of the first docks you would?
As you come down the hill.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a big dock there.
I was just on that dock a week ago.
I recall it having been rebuilt, and I thought the Cottage Association had done that, but of course, it could easily have been 20 years ago, and there's not too many people there that were there 20 years ago. I mean, the executive membership changes, there doesn't appear to be any record that we, that we have. At one time, well, there's a sign on the 41 Highway saying it's a boat, boat launch there, which is a provincial, I think there's one at the top of the hill, too. There's a toilet there, too. I'm not sure who maintains that. Anyway.
Just, that, that dock is very well used. I mean, that, the first one in there?
Part of their, their concern was that it's being used as a vacation site by, I'm not at liberty to mention names or anything of that sort, but sometimes hindering anybody else from accessing the lake. There is only one access point, as far as I know.
Question about the Ashby Lake waste site, was that a municipal waste site that we had? It was. And we, I guess we, at one time, we had several, including the Northbrook one that were just closed when they were deemed... when they were deemed whatever, full or unnecessary years ago.
We, we could assume they were closed, I don't know what procedure or what.
Exactly.
There isn't a plan that I know of, that, again, I have to look through back what we, what we found, but yeah, we're talking a long time ago.
When regulations changed.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It was in the early nineties, I'm certain.
Yeah.
I was, I was involved. Like, but, but after that length of time, my memory starts to fade. Anyway, I'm just. Any other business? Yes, and confirming bylaw, confirming proceedings, oh.
Sorry, Reeve Hogg, before we move, um, away from your questions arising out of the, um, Property Owners Association, um, is there any action that council wishes, um, staff to take? Based on those questions, we've looked into the waste site and we'll continue to, to do so. But you did mention the sign, we are currently finalizing the RFP for our municipal signs. Um, keeping in mind that Ashby Lake isn't the only lake in the municipality and how we wanna approach and handle all of, all of the lakes. So we're just looking for a bit of direction.
I believe they would be in favor of contributing something towards a, a sign, I think what what needs to happen is, I don't have any contact information other than Scott Hannan. Contact him and tell him that, uh, if there's any interest in a sign, I guess, contact Patricia or yourself.
We, we can reach out to, uh, to Mr. Hannan, oh, I believe Patricia may have something to add.
And, and since our discussions, when, when you first brought it to us, Henry, I, or, re, sorry, Reeve Hogg, um, I was approached through an email by the, I think it was the president, reaching out regarding a sign bylaw, looking to see what we had. And that was just before, um, the holidays, so I had flagged that email in order to speak with, uh, um, the clerk and the roads manager, and I let her know that I would speak to them and get back to her. So I had asked also if there was which sign in particular she was referring to, so she just was asking about upgrading, um, the signage that was there. So I had asked for some pictures and, and, um, just what sign it was so that we could get back to them. And, and really she only asked about the, the sign bylaws that we had, so. Um, we'd been contacted and, and we could continue to work with them, with that representative from the Lake Association.
I just thought that if there was any, if they were going to manufacture some sort of sign, it'd be nice if it was harmonious with the rest of the signs that we're putting up in the municipality. That was my only thoughts. Ken?
If we do make that available to Ashby Lake, uh, at a shared cost, I think this is suggested we should make it to the other lake associations, but whereas the Hamlet sites are gonna be like this big, I mean, a lake one could be half that size and probably half the cost, uh, I mean, the installation would probably be similar, but but it wouldn't have to be the full size of a Hamlet site because it's not a Hamlet, so. Maybe we could look into a smaller size at the lesser cost.
Yeah, and it's a matter of where, where they're located and everything else, I mean. Yeah, just, it was just a thought, I mean, I'm not. Do you need any sort of motion? No.
I don't, I don't think so, just maybe a motion to receive and then staff can work it.
We'll pay Councillor Hook Saturday night. Deputy Reeve French? Ready for the vote, Councillor Thompson?
Yes.
Councillor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve French?
Yes.
Councillor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Anything else before we adjourn? Motion to confirm the proceedings. Councillor Yance, Councillor Thompson? Ready for the vote, Councillor Thompson?
Yes.
Councillor Hook? Deputy Reeve French?
Yes.
Councillor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. I need a motion to adjourn. Councillor Thompson, Councillor Yance? Ready for the vote, Councillor Thompson?
Yes.
Councillor Hook?
Yes.
Deputy Reeve French?
Yes.
Councillor Yance?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.